It is 5:30, so we'll go ahead and get started with our work sessions. If I can get the board members quiet. Thank you all for coming tonight. I'm Stephanie Thompson. I'm promoted to the chairman of the Blount County Public Library Board of Trustees. As you probably all know, we had an unfortunate scary event happen last week in our library. We had a teenage girl attacked in the women's bathroom. I'm glad to say she did not sustain any injuries except some lacerations. She was courageous, she was strong, and she fought this assailant off. And quite frankly, she just beat the crap out of him, which we were very glad about. I am mad this happened in our library. I'm mad she and her parents had to deal with this attack. But she is fine, and from an email from her mother, she is proud of herself. I appreciate this family's support and their communication with the staff. I'm proud of her too, and I hope to get to meet her someday and tell her that. She is my kind of person and my hero. I'm also proud of the Blount County Public Library staff. They responded immediately. Those staff members immediately went into mother and protective mode to protect this girl, get her in a safe place, and Mayor Police Department immediately responded. They located and apprehended the person responsible and charged him with assault. I bet in this room, we can find four, five, six females who have had the same kind of experience. I bet with our staff who have a high percentage of females, they have also experienced some unpleasant encounters. I am sorry that any female has to ever have something like this happen to them. I know I did in college and later again as an adult. But it doesn't make it acceptable. I was able to avoid a bad situation, but it doesn't make it right. It's a societal problem. We won't be able to solve the societal problem, but we're going to try to do our best as the Blount County Library Board and our staff. Our board will not accept this behavior in our library. Our director and staff will not accept this behavior, and I know our governments and community will not accept this behavior. That is not Blount County. The person who was apprehended looked like a new library patron with laptop, iPad, working at a tabletop workstation. Nothing that would send off any alarms. Why would it? We are a public library and open to anyone walking in. We have so many visitors from our county and cities, from out of county, out of state, that have heard about how wonderful and beautiful our library is. We have hundreds of people come in all the time just to see our library and participate in concerts, children's hours, mini-con, genealogy, friends book sales, senior programs, computer training, and all the amazing things that go on in this library every day. 365 days a year minus a few holidays that they take off and are closed. What other public organization in our community stays open this many days a year? Only the Blount County Public Library. We do realize that based on this recent assault, we as a board and staff need to evaluate the safety practices, our staff response and training, as well as anything else that can be identified so that we can ensure the safety of our patrons and staff. Some short-term safety suggestions have already been implemented, and we will be working with our local government, law enforcement, staff, citizens, community organizations, architects, and safety specialists to ensure that Blount County Public Library is doing everything we can for safety. We hope our community will understand if we have to implement policies and procedures that require sign-in, library cards, ID badges, registration, identification of who you are with a driver's license, whatever this board and any committee the board appoints decides is important to sure ensure everyone's safety. So we hope you'll be tolerant of us as we work through this process and identify those safety things that need to be done. We really appreciate your support and hope you can provide positive feedback and real-life usable ideas on how to provide safety for our patrons and staff. I appreciate the board meeting on this. It's not a call meeting, it's in a work session. We had a couple of members who could not be here because they had current commitments, but I appreciate the board being here and your leadership and willingness to step up. I appreciate the support and leadership of Manny and the entire staff, and I appreciate the support of our local governments, mayors, commissioners, city and county officials and employees, and the grounds maintenance crew of Blount County. I especially appreciate the recent stepped-up support of Mayor and Alcoa Police Departments for their daily walkthroughs and drive-throughs of the Blount County Public Library. The government's support has been tremendous. At this time, I'd like to give any board member an opportunity to say a few words, any of you all that would like to say something.
Well, speaking from the legal aspect, I don't really mean that, that's okay. So I am, for those who don't know, I'm an assistant public defender here in Blount County. My name is Sean Graham, and I was present in court yesterday when Mr. Wilson, the accused in this case, came to court. Now, my office was not appointed to represent him because I am a member of this board, but I was present and I had a chance to see what he'd been charged with. One of the offenses is actually a little more serious than just an assault. There is a, looks like there may be an attempted sexual battery sort of charge. He was appointed a private attorney from the local bar to represent him. And what I'm, guess what I'm getting across to folks is these are all things that are public. I don't know anything that's deep and secret about it. So what I'm, what I'm telling everyone is things that I had seen in court, heard between the district attorney, Mr. Wilson's attorney, and Judge Robert Hedrick, who's the judge that is right now overseeing the case. So Mr. Wilson is a, he's a Blount County resident, he's from the Eljoy Community. He, there are, these are serious charges, looks like at least one is a felony under our laws here in Tennessee. Don't know what the outcome of that will be, but one of the things that is, I think, good for us in the sense that it has been charged as a felony, is there is some indication at least, and I'm not an expert at this, so I'll let those who are expert sort of tell us what's going on, is there, there may be some mental health and mental illness issues that are part of this also. And by virtue of him being charged with a felony, the ability to have mental health professionals intervene in the case, not to say that it's going to be anything, he's going to be hospitalized for some period of time and let out, but rather a diagnosis made, those are more easily done when a person's charged with felony. In fact, if a person's only charged with a misdemeanor in Tennessee and they are not able to hire their own attorney, they cannot access through county funds or state funds any kind of mental health, any kind of mental health assessments or treatment at all right now. Only felonies under this. So that's a, that's a sort of a sticking point with me. I've been doing this for, I'll start my 31st year, no, 36th year at the first of next month. And so I'm hopeful there is something that comes out of this that's positive for us in the long run. This may be something that kind of focuses our attention on one of the things that people have come in and talked about a lot is are there mental health issues of people that are coming and using this library? And this may be something that's able to get our, get our focus laser pointed, which is, which is something that we can talk the talk, we have to walk the walk as well, and this is a place where that can happen. And I apologize for preaching, but having been there, having dealt with this all, you know, all these years, this is something that is important to me because I have an 18-year-old daughter at home. Could have been my daughter that was, that was in our facilities. So from a legal aspect, I've also spoken with the district attorney. She has indicated to me that she's going to continue to be upfront with me, give me updates so that I can keep not only the board apprised of what's going on, but also when we have meetings or in situations like this, that I'll be able to keep the public, the public updated. Also, I think that Attorney General Ryan Desmond's office is going to be good in making sure that their work along with the sheriff's department, Alcoa Police, Mayor Police, take a lot of things into consideration. And I think there's going to be some, along with the discussion that we're having here, also discussion between, between folks that are in the court system and where does this go and what do we do, not only here, but also at other, other places that are, where the public is able to come to and make folks as safe as we, as we can and when we're out enjoying ourselves here, conducting business at different places. But no place is immune from it. In fact, this gave rise to me remembering some 10, 12 years ago, we had an incident similar to this at the Blount County Justice Center in one of the restrooms. A clerk was, was attacked by someone who was there. Again, much like the allegations that are involved in this particular situation, it was one that was almost an ambush kind of situation where a person was in the restroom washing their hands and all of a sudden gets attacked. So we're not immune from it, but question is how do we go forward with this, taking, I hope, common sense things in hand for us?
On our agenda, we're having a safety discussion, and it also says safety committee selection. We will not be doing a safety committee selection. We may be discussing possible candidates, but because this is a work session and we don't have any actionable items on there, we will move on with the rest of the program. This workshop's going to look a little different than what our normal board meetings look like. We have some staff who are ready to start looking at the issue of the problem that we're looking at. How can we ensure board the safety of our patrons and staff, and what can we do about it? We can't control a plan for every situation, but we can certainly try. So what are our problems? If we're looking at safety of our staff, we need to identify what our problem areas are. And I'll identify one of the first ones. The first one would be the bathrooms. And the isolation of the bathrooms in the main gallery, as well as the one down in the meeting hall here. The one in the main gallery is kind of recessed. I don't know if you've been there or not, they're kind of recessed. There's a huge support beam right in front of the bathroom, and we can, you don't have any line of sight from the circulation desk, from the checkout desk, from those other areas. So where's my reporters? Who's my writers?
Beth, would you mind? Thank you so much. Got marker right over here next to Sean.
So our first problem, we're going to put one problem on a piece of paper. So our first problem is the isolation of the bathrooms. Put it, pretty large and put it up, yeah, high. Okay, let's talk about other problems. Susan, you had several.
I think outside by the table, is there likely some safety issues?
Outside in the back?
I think I didn't, this was given to me by someone.
Okay.
Hold me.
So, yeah. So you want each one?
Yeah, the Wi-Fi.
All right, other one?
I know a topic that's come up at least once on previous meetings has been the access to the children's area via a back door.
Is the vegetation something that's going to be maintained frequently by the county? Or is that a problem now, or is it taken care of?
I think they have, they have spent two weeks at here, I think, really worrying on the vegetation. And I think that's going to be an ongoing update. So it makes everything look so much better than it did, and it's, yeah. But maybe we need to put that, that kind of, that kind of grounds, maybe.
I think we need to check these additional areas to make sure that we don't own that property or if we do, because there's still overgrown near the house that's there on Hannum Street.
Back here?
Yes. Yes.
Any other? I know we've got more. Manny?
How about the basement? Yeah.
Just a weird information, there's cameras throughout the base, with upper and lower levels.
Right. Yes, there's cameras on the main level here, and there are cameras in the basement, correct?
Are there external cameras?
There are. Well, right now, there is a dead spot, actually the exterior of my office, and there is a tree that is blocking it. And General Services will be removing parts of that tree so we can look at those picnic tables back there.
Where, there's cameras that are located exterior and interior. Is there a central viewing area for that, or is it something that is just, is just uploaded to the computer system?
So there are several of us that can go on live right now and look at the cameras, if that answers your question.
Right. I mean, that's, I guess that's the thing, is that how difficult is it to see that? Is it, you know, and is it something that is readily shareable with law enforcement once they?
Absolutely. So the night of the incident, the officer was here, asked one of our staff, and she's really good at identifying the cameras, and she had that in moments.
Good, good.
I know we upgraded the outside lighting. We need to check it again to make sure that it's, that it is adequate, more than adequate.
And that would have been the parking lot, did that include like back on the Greenway area as well? Is it well-lit back there?
I don't think we have any lighting on the green.
Oh, we don't. Yeah.
But kind of our back patio area where the Wi-Fi cables are and such.
I know an area that has come up for the staff too. Just the layout of the library, especially going down the admin hallway. Most libraries have, you would have to be buzzed in or scanned. And we've had, staff can definitely, you know, agree that we've had people just walking back there. We have some very valuable equipment and other things back there. The day of the mini-con, I went back there and there were just a couple of people just walking around back there and asking, what are you doing back here? Looking for the bathroom back there, so, yeah.
So that may, at the Justice Center, there have been situations where there have been counties install doors between office areas and public areas. That may be something that we might want to discuss.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, that's good. Well, I think one that we heard quite a bit from the community is the homeless population, that we find ourselves sometimes being in the lot of the area.
Or in the parking lot.
That big one.
Or in the parking lot.
Or in the parking lot, right.
Occupying and the vehicles were just around and.
Manny, did staff bring any other? I mean, I'm curious, because they're in it, you know, day in and day out.
So, I mean, there's some staff here, and they can be more than happy to speak out. But, well, this, this is probably a solution, but I think having, it is great to have law enforcement here every couple of hours doing this perimeter sweep. I think staff would be elated if it was permanent during operational hours. And that's, that's a solution, but I think that would be, that would go a long way.
This is a, in the question, maybe one direction or the other. How often does the staff receive security awareness training? Is that part of the regular rotation of curriculum?
So we just did, earlier this year, we did active, or active attack, it's not active shooter anymore, from corporal break rule. Let me use corporal break. We are having our staff development day in a couple of weeks, and we were going to be addressing, we're going to have our annual fire drill that time, how to work the AED machines, how to properly remove gloves. So we go through safety training quite often. We also had, earlier this year, it was an evacuation drill for disastrous weather where we would go. So risk management likes to do that every, every year.
Is it followed to that, what kind of incident reporting measures are we tracking? You understand? Are we keeping track of any sort of aggressive or incident reports?
Yes, yeah. Yes, definitely.
Staff development need to be a, one of the, not necessarily a problem, but maybe part of the solution.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, although it could be. Staff development, it's not a problem, but it's an area that you have to continually.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, agreed.
Provide solutions or.
Yeah, and the big, we have such a big turnover right now. We have a lot of new faces, and it's the communication. You know, there was, I'll get into details, but last year, there was an incident that happened, and I found out about it the next day, just when the staff member just kind of blindly said it to me. I had no idea what happened. And then there was another incident where I was out at a workshop, and I had gotten a text, and I was nowhere near Blount County, and the admin staff that was here, they didn't know anything about it. So it's, so that's on our part for the communication side, being like.
Yeah, and I think that's an ongoing.
Oh, yeah.
No matter where you were.
Yeah.
Any other that you can think of? Some of this nature or some other?
I don't quite know how to put it into words, forgive me if I'm meandering a bit, but just from reviewing the security footage that was shared with me, the lack of, lack of awareness or focus around the bathroom, seems to be some bathrooms. There's no noise, there's no indication that someone's in there. I don't know, again, it's bathrooms are private places, so like, there's definitely. But at the same time, he runs past the patrons unaware that something's happening, who is standing in front of the bathroom. And so I don't know, there's something, if that we should look at that as some sort of problem area. I know the column was already mentioned, but there may be more beyond that we should consider.
I had a school board member reach out about parents being concerned about their kids being in the library now. And so I think making sure, we have policies, right, about students or kids being accompanied by adults. And remind me, is that 16 and under?
It's 14.
14.
Yeah, it's under 14, so it's 13.
Okay, so 13 and under. And so, you know, it's, we need staff frontline to be vigilant of that, right? And so, you know, this particular girl was not 13, and it's hard to tell age, but you can tell if they're 13 from a 16-year-old. So I was just, you know, how do we communicate? I think one of our problems is communicating safety, like communicating this is, what we're going to do moving forward. I think that is one of our problems, is communicating, yeah, to the public, what steps we're taking to make them feel comfortable for their children to come. So probably like a, you know, a public awareness campaign, you know, not campaign, public awareness.
I don't see any, we're going to post these up. Here on. Yeah, at least they can, somewhere we got to.
Yeah.
This is happening even where he doesn't have, this post over notes, like we have. Thank you. Yeah, yeah. Unasked. We didn't. Yeah, I think this is going to help, at least that's what we're going to run, it's working very well. Watching that page down, she can make those very nice.
Common torturing.
Thank you. So one of the. I think we can. A big crowd. I'm going to bring it over here. Exactly. That's it. You've got to stay in there and hold them.
Good job.
Writing it. Just breaking in.
Okay, now we want you all to get involved. See what problems that we have, that we have identified, and we're going to have another, other, we're other on a G2. Yeah, we'll put it back in the back corner here. So if there's a problem here that has not been identified in your mind, then we want you to post it on that back one that says other. We've got post-it notes, and we want you all to be part of the solution. You can see each of the problems. So on that post-it note, we want something actionable, if possible, that you think that we can do. For instance, for one of, let's see, main door of the admin. For instance, uh, for one of, let's say, main door of the admin hallway. We already had a suggestion there, so um, I think uh, Sean needs to post that suggestions on that one. Uh, if you had, see something about like the wifi tables, what do we need to do about those wifi tables? Post it on that, to that one. Staff training and communication, specific things that we can do with staff training and communication. Communications, public about safety. So we've got post-it notes written around everywhere. Uh, and we want you to write a possible solution to this problem. And we're gonna do this, um, at six o'clock now, uh, at six fifteen, we want you to be be through in fifteen minutes. The walk around, get up, uh, we've got pens up, pens and pencils up here. Uh, write something down on these sticky notes. You can also write on the paper as well, if you don't wanna do the sticky note.
It only goes to people who have to have a key card to access. Unless it's like a good salesman's on the laundry and someone rides it up and down.
But we talked about. I know, and she said that that's because um. Right, but we can, yes, we can press pass people. We can do this.
Here, so.
Yeah, well, what's it, what's your email?
There's something called coupons. I know it doesn't drive.
Yes, yes. So it's, it's a situation.
Totally do right to well be with. Understand that there's other kind of feeling, perhaps you watch cats of likeness. This is. Tennessee. Oh, and it's a, okay, that's. He's not. Eventually he is. Oh, what's.
Will do.
Yes.
Imagine. Right. Anyway, so. Yeah. Yeah.
If we, if we're.
All right.
Okay, that was a very good job. Thank you all for coming and participating. And uh, in fifteen minutes, you can see all the suggestions that the board will have to uh, consider. The next step will be, um, Summer will take pictures of these um, each of these boards and we will uh, compile the problems as well as some of the possibilities and solutions. And the, our next board meeting is November. Twenty.
Yes, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
Tuesday before Thanksgiving. Um, so at that time, we will be discussing um, a lot of these uh, solutions and uh, coming up with a plan and priorities of what what we feel like we can do. Uh, we may be appointing a, a committee that will uh, come in and study uh, the, the library itself, a risk management. So we'll be talking about some of those people that we might want to serve on that committee. So if any of you have any suggestions for uh, particular people to serve on this committee, we would welcome those suggestions as well. Um, this concludes our work session. Uh, feel free to, to walk around and take pictures of the um, boards, if you would like to do that, or um, you can wait until Summer gets those ready and requests a copy of that. We'll be doing the same process with the staff uh, in the next few days, so that we'll give them an opportunity to also look at these problems and identify any other problems that they feel need to be presented and to um, present some solutions. Uh, board members, anybody else want to conclude or say anything?
I wanna thank you. I just wanna thank you.
So at the end of all of our evaluation of all the particular opportunities, are we gonna prioritize?
I think so.
Okay, so.
I might make just a couple last comments. And this is one again coming from the, the legal as- aspects of things and, and something that I want everybody to kind of be aware of as we go through this, this process. One of the things that is, that is being implemented, um, and it's, and I, I know because I've spoken with some of the district attorneys, it, it is going to be um, easier, I suspect, for us to, to um, now trespass folks who are troublemakers um, from. From the from the library premises. Now, that creates a thorny issue and that that's one that that really um. That's kind of a a law enforcement question. We can, we as a board, the library as a. As an institution can can request that and generally um. Those are things that, you know, those, the bliss of folks gets um, they get disseminated to the sheriff's department. The Alcoa police, the the Mereville police um so that and and a lot of the folks are are known anyway. But one thing that I do want to um. Let folks know that uh because I do, because Tennessee is a little different than some places. In Tennessee today, we do not have any loitering laws. We have trespass laws, we have disorder of conduct laws. The loitering statute uh went away back some thirty years ago, um something like that. So that there can be municipal ordinances placed on that. And frankly, I'm not aware of whether or not the cities of Mereville or Alcoa would have those and what the particular um. What it gives law enforcement the ability to to do. But that may also be something as we go through this to, you know, perhaps for the city councils. Of both of those municipalities, because it has to be municipal, can't be county ordinance um in this si- this situation. That that might might be something that the towns themselves need to to revisit. Um could frankly, it may not be just the library, but other places, Kroger, um McDonald's, where wherever. Um but that's something that I I know that I've had people ask me since last week about. Well, what can we do about folks that may be loitering? Well, and I've, you know, I've gone back and done a little little bit of homework to find out with, is there anything that we can do about that? And unfortunately. We can, we can act as best we can, but we have to be reactive. In a lot more situations than we probably would 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 want to do. So um I hope if anyone had a question about that, I hope that that answered that.
I am curious, is the perpetrator still in?
Yes, oh, so that I I looked looked back up and I know that and I can use, I'll use my my corporate voice now. He, Mr. Wilson, his name is James, James Wilson, he has been charged with an attempted rape. Um and so the charge that he has, not saying what is going to happen, just what. Just what the Tennessee law says about it. He's been charged with a crime that carries punishment if he's found guilty. Of between three and three and and six years. So um but again, we're at the at the very beginning of his his journey. No, he's he is still in jail and the amount of bond that has been set in in his case. Is such that it is um incredibly unlikely that he would get out. Um but if he did, there are certain um. Certain things that the judge has ordered to take place. So if he got out, he'd be placed on GPS monitoring. He would be required to um, you know, he would be, he would be required to stay away from from here. He would be required to report probably daily to a to a probation office so that they could could um. Could monitor him. But again, in all likelihood, um he is, he will not be getting out of custody anytime anytime soon.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you all. Appreciate you coming and participating. Thank you so much.